Wheeze, you need to mute either your computer or your phone.
Okay.
One or the other.
Yes, you're good there.
There you go.
You're good.
Nevermind, leave it.
Wait, say hello. All right, okay, there we go. Well, oh, the camera's gone. Professional organization, it's all good. I'm just waiting for the red light to come back on. Is Jenny here?
Jenny, are you back?
She's there.
Yeah, I'm just listening. Now, now I'm seeing.
We just got the coming up next. Marky M two. It was just on, I don't know what happened.
Can you tell me a heater?
Hmm?
Let me get you a heater. Deputy Mayor, can you go find out what's going on?
It says coming up next, but it's not on.
Yeah, he doesn't have the light on.
Dude, it's.
There you go. My screen is still blank. All right. I call the committee of the whole in the Mon County Commission Chambers, two forty-three High Street, on the second floor of Morgantown, West Virginia, two six five oh five, on Tuesday, February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, seven thirty P. M. Official action is taken at these meetings. At this committee of the whole meeting, we will be attending to several matters. The first of which is a presentation from our twenty twenty-three Urban Archery Deer Hunt Recap by Rick Bebo.
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 Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate the council's invitation back. I'm happy to report that, like past seasons, our twenty twenty-three season was both safe and successful. Successful in the, in the, in regards to having a record harvest of one hundred and forty-two deer. Of note, of twenty-eight of those deer were taken out of four of the city parks that we started hunting again this year after a several-year hiatus working with Bow Park. And that was great. I'm gonna meet with the Bow Park Board in March and give them a little bit more in-depth recap specific to Bow Park. Happy to report that our hunters donated forty-nine deer that yielded one thousand four hundred and seventy-eight pounds of ground venison, which goes to our, our local shelters and, you know, help those in need in our community. And the significant thing about that total was it put us over the six-ton mark of donated meat over our thirteen-year history. So that's, that's pretty, uh, we're pretty proud of that, of our, our volunteer hunters. Really, the only issues that we have are external this year. Like many years, we had some minor property theft, trail cameras, some, some tree stands, I think one ground blind. That's kind of the, the part of hunting in the city, you know? And then this year, increasingly a problem, we had some homeless camps in, in some of these properties and, and our, our hunters report them to myself or, or our coordinator, Paul Crumrind. We turn it over to the city or university police, in one case Bow Park, and make them aware of it and let them handle it as they see fit. But over all in all, a great year. And we're already in the planning stages for twenty twenty-four, which will begin on Saturday, September seventh. And at this time, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Who would like to, anybody have a question?
Just a comment. Thank you very much. It's, um, it's good to hear that we're relieving some of the problems that we have with deer, plus doing something good and beneficial for the community. I would appreciate your input and your, your activity. Thank you.
I actually have a couple of questions. Because I have a student that I had told about this last year after, I believe you all had presented, and they wanted to eventually take part in it. How, how does someone go about getting involved?
So, um, the city's website, I think it's actually under the things to do, maybe, uh, menu. Don't quote me on that, it's been a while since I've been on there. Uh, but there's an urban deer section. And part of that page gives people some information, not only about our project, but what, what they can do to, to kind of mitigate deer damage on their, their personal property, their lawn, their, their garden, what, what have you. And there's an application on there. Uh, they submit, give us some background about themselves, a copy of their driver's license, their West Virginia hunting license, and then they go onto a waitlist. So in, in April, May timeframe, we look at the total number of hunters coming back, the total number of properties available, uh, new properties that we added into the fold, and then we determine how many people we, we can bring in. Last year, we were able to, to clear our waitlist, and I believe we'll, we'll probably be able to do so again this year. Uh, right now, I would ballpark, we have twelve to fifteen applicants on our current waitlist.
May I ask, uh, what, is there an age limit?
Uh, there's not an age limit. Uh, I mean, we're looking for year, we do look at the, the application for years of experience bowhunting. Uh, the last thing we're gonna do is, this, this isn't for, for new hunters.
Right.
You know? Um, so we look at years of experience in bowhunting, and that's really much the, the deciding factor. In fact, we just turned, uh, turned somebody away, uh, I think about a month ago, who applied, and they'd only been bowhunting three years, and I think they only had maybe one or two bowharvests. This isn't the, the project for them. But I told the applicant, uh, you know, in a couple of years, you get some more experience under your belt, follow back up with us, we'd be glad to revisit it.
All right.
How many hunters do you generally have every year?
Uh, this year, I think, uh, after we had some people not show up for the course that were actually given a permit, uh, I think we had between eighty-five and ninety hunters. I apologize for not having the exact number, uh, but I think it was between eighty-five and ninety.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was like twenty to thirty, eighty-five to ninety is more than I was anticipating.
Yeah, I had twenty, thirty in my head.
Bless you.
In everything, I'm the chair of Bow Park, everything went well on the, on, in the parks? You anticipate asking to do that again next year?
Yeah, yeah, it went really successful. I think, uh, and I have, I have a separate Bow Park document I'm working on. Uh, I think we had, our hunters had a total of five, uh, public interactions. And four of them were positive. One of them was a phone call in, in the end of November from a woman who was just now finding out that we were hunting in, in Marilla Park. And we'd had signs up, uh, I'd been to Bow Park Council, it'd been in the paper. And, uh, and then she was equally surprised to find out that we were hunting in the, the core arboretum, which we'd been hunting in for thirteen years. So, um, I, I think she maybe just, uh, you know, maybe next year, uh, tune in a little bit better and, but we're doing all we can. That's why I come to these meetings, and, and that's why we work with Bow Park and our, our, our land partners to educate the community as best we can.
Uh, Wheezy or Mayor, anything you wanted to ask or add or? Thumbs up if we're good?
Sure appreciate all the efforts. It's, um, been a great thing, great partnership with the city and, um, this year again with Bow Park and, um, and all the food pantries and places where the, um, venison goes. It's, um, a pretty cool project because we definitely have quite a few deer in city limits and there are no natural predators besides cars. And it's much, much better to, um, hunt and use the meat for something.
Well, thank you. And I, I know you had a personal, uh, a personal stake in, in some of the problems in Suncrest, and, and we really, uh, I think began addressing those this year. So, so thanks for your help, uh, with that.
All right.
Thank you.
Well?
All right. Well, hey, thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate your team's support, and I'll probably see you again in August. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the Civilian Police Review and Advisory Board Twenty Twenty-three Annual Report Presentation with Richard Burks, the chair.
Good evening, everyone. Um, what I'm gonna do is give you an overview of the annual report. Uh, the annual report's been published, and it's, uh, it's contained on our website right now, along with our bylaws. Uh, so I'm not gonna get to a lot of detail about the report itself. We started, our board first had, had a first meeting on April the fourth of twenty twenty-three. And at that time, we had eight members on the board. We had one drop-off, and we currently are down to seven members. And, uh, the reason I bring that up first, because that's, that's a big issue with us. We need to, we need to have a full board in order to be very successful. First board meeting, we, um, we elected officers, and at that point, I was elected chair. Rachel Fettie is the vice chair, and, uh, Bob Cohen is our secretary. Uh, we initially had someone else as our secretary, but they had to, they had to leave because of, um, employment with the city. So we're kind of like trying to get those vacancies filled. There's a lot of work to do, and, uh, we need, we need a full board in order to, to be efficient. Some of the things that we did during that first meeting was to, we set up committees, um, right off the bat, because we, it'd been a while, we hadn't done anything, so we wanted to have some structure on how we're gonna proceed. Uh, we set up a bylaws committee, a training committee, community outreach committee, and a statistical data and reporting committee. So we put those together, and everybody went on their own merry way. The bylaws were finally approved in November of twenty twenty-three. Guess the thing I'd like to really point out too also is the fact that, um, we've been communicating a lot with the Morgantown Police Department. Um, we've had several meetings with the chief, um, one to get an, an idea of policy and procedure, another to, just to get an idea of how police do their job. So, um, we have something planned, we're gonna do a case study. We have a, we have a video that we wanna take a look at, and it, um, we wanna take a look at, from the point of the, the nine eleven call to the outcome, which, which in this particular case was an arrest. And we wanna see all the steps in between. We wanna take a look at, you know, how was, how the officers arrived on scene. We wanna see how they interacted with the public. And so we, you know, we, I think we're, we're using that as a, as a learning experience. There was some misconception about this, it was in the paper at one point, where they thought it was a case that we were investigating and a complaint and all this, and no, for one, we don't investigate. All right? We wanna make that perfectly clear, and we say that every chance we get. Because we don't wanna have, we wouldn't want the public to have unreal, unrealistic expectations about the, the authority of this board. And that's planned, matter of fact, it's planned for this Thursday. We're meeting, we're meeting with the chief to go over that case study. And I think what it'll also do is, it'll give us an idea to how, how to go move forward with the audits, because that's one of the responsibilities of this board, is to audit policy and procedure. So we need to understand, okay, you have a policy, what's the objective of that policy? And what are, what are the steps that you need to take in order to actually, uh, discharge the responsibilities under that particular policy and procedure? And I, I think that, uh, we've had several conversations with the chief, and he's very, he's been very receptive and forthcoming with the information, um, and, uh, I can't say enough about that. So, you know, I think, I think we have a good relationship moving forward. We also plan to have, well, we did have a, a public meeting last, well, February the eighth was the first public meeting that we had. Um, it was attended by about thirty-seven people, and it was held at the public library. It was a good meeting, uh, a lot of comments, a lot of things to take in consideration. Something that did come out of that was the fact that, uh, there still was no way to file complaints. And I can, I can say that, um, beside going to the police department, well, that's been rectified. There is now a complaint form out on the site, before there wasn't. Now, now in Morgantown Police Department, you can file, you can find the civilian police, uh, the civilian form, complaint form. So, um, that was something that good, good came out of that meeting. And also, I think we made some contact with some people that, uh, can give us some insight. So I think that, uh, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna be okay. I think we're gonna be okay. I think we can put people's mind to ease that we're really here for the community. It's not a, there's no hidden agenda. You know, we, if, if you're gonna implement a philosophy of community policing, we, we need to make sure the community's involved. And we feel as if, uh, the community meetings that we're having, I think, is, is, goes a long way. And we're also reaching out to different neighborhood groups. We wanna make sure that we have a contact in each area of the city, um, so that, you know, that's, we have a go-to, and they have a go-to. They know how to get in contact with us. So, um, I, I think that, uh, we're moving ahead. Some of the things we wanna do for twenty twenty-four, um, I mentioned the case study. We're also looking to, uh, select an annual training pro, program of some type. At this point, we are, we have, we've had a training session with, um, Dr. Jim Noel on, on community policing. So that's, that's the training that we've had thus far, but we're looking to get something else aside that. We're also, um, developing and, um, developing a statistical report, uh, for the Morgantown Police Department. Um, we have, we're meeting with, um, the chief, matter of fact, on Thursday. We're gonna talk about when we can schedule that, that appointment with his, um, his technician in order to, to get the reports that we want. Because we weren't, we wanted to be able to say that, you know, any, any recommendation that we make will be supported by data. You know, we don't, we wanna take the feelings out of this completely. I can't say that, I say that all the time, and I, I truly believe that. Unless you have facts supported by data, then it's whatever somebody says, whatever somebody feels, and that's not necessarily the right way to go. And we're also, um, developing, um, a community survey in conjunction with WVU. And what we're gonna use that for, we're gonna use an instrument to, um, gauge police perception. That's gonna take place in, in twenty twenty-four also. All right, that's really all I have. Any questions? Comments?
Can I make just a clarifying? You said that the meeting at the library was your first public meeting, but all of the meetings are public. That was just your first open house meant to have dialogue, but I just wanna make sure the public knows all meetings are public.
Yes.
Yeah. I attended that meeting for as long as I could.
You had to run, I, I.
I had a planning commission meeting, but, um, yeah, I thought that the turnout was great and the explanation that, um, Rachel Fettie gave on the history of the board and how it came to be and how you got where you are, uh, I thought that that was very well done, and I, uh, I think I left in the middle of your remarks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I was gonna ask you a question, actually.
Yeah.
You said, um, you're doing a thing with WVU to help with perception?
Yes.
The community sorts police or police and how they give the community?
How, how, how does the community view the police?
Okay.
Yeah.
May I ask, like, what, what's, um, what's the goal?
What's the goal is to, to really get a starting point? You know, um, how does, how does the city feel the police are doing their job? You know, what, what can they improve on? What do they do well? I mean, I don't, I, I don't know the details of the survey because that's something that hasn't been developed.
Okay.
But, uh, we think it's a, it's, it gives you a good gauge on, on, on where they, where, you know, where the public thinks that they are.
Okay. Did either of you have anything you'd like to?
I, I didn't get it, so he had mentioned a date toward the end, something about WVU. Was he saying that we're doing a group safety meeting with WVU?
Uh, no, uh, we're gonna do a survey in conjunction with WVU, a community survey.
Okay, thank you, I misunderstood. I appreciate your time.
I, I caught, I caught, I caught the other end of the meeting, but I, I think that, um, we were tag teaming without meaning to, so I came into the second, second half of the public meeting at the library, and it was very well-run, it was well-attended, um, there were members of the police force in attendance, which was nice, so that they could hear, um, the different comments that people had. I think that people, in some ways, would like to see, um, sort of more powers or something like that, but I think that the value of a citizens' commission like this is what we can do working together with people. So how, um, how our officers and our committee members and our public can make improvements and make, um, connections and understanding so that we end up, um, with a more satisfied public and, uh, and police officers who, um, are responsive and interested in what people have to say. So, um, I thought it was a great meeting, and I appreciated the, um, patience of everyone involved, including the citizens, some of whom were frustrated. So I thought it was a really good meeting.
I just wanna chime in, thank you. You seem like you're off to a good start. I'm sorry that, if I'm correct, you're, you're three positions shy?
Too short.
Very good. We'll, we'll do what we can.
Yeah, cuz, and, cuz the thing about a, a board like this, you know, you're, you're starting from the ground up. So, you know, we're trying to put, trying to put a structure in place that's sustainable.
Very good. Like I said, you're off to a good start, thank you.
Thanks.
Really appreciate it, thank you very much. All right, that closes the presentations for the evening. Now on to the public portion. Do we have anyone sign up for that? I don't think you did, though. And then if anybody is wanting to speak during this public portion, now's your chance. All right, and I close that. And up next, we have items for discussion. An ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Morgantown for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five. Who'd like to take the lead? Come on, thank you.
Excuse me, I have to spread out a little bit, sorry. Good evening, council. First, I apologize to the folks that are, uh, remote. I, I didn't think about that, that there might be remotes, and so I printed out some, some, uh, pages, some graphs and tables that, that you will not have access to, and I, I do, again, apologize, uh, for that. Second, a big shout-out to my finance staff, especially Lori and Sam, and also, uh, Assistant City Manager, Musarelli, for all the time she's helped us with this. We started this process back in November. We've worked closely, uh, with administration and department heads, uh, to develop the budget book that you were presented, uh, with last week. It, it's kind of been a painful process, more than the last couple have been. Revenues remain strong, I don't wanna give that indication, uh, but they have flattened out a little bit, and, and so it seemed like we were trying a little bit harder, uh, to, to allocate these revenues to areas that, that we thought, um, that we needed. Like I said, we, we met with department heads, uh, first week in December, uh, to go over the, some of the CIP, uh, projects and, uh, any positions they were requesting. of the CIP projects and any positions they were requesting. Then we met with them again in the first week of January to develop their operating budgets. And it's lots of meetings between us and administration and cutting and trying to come up with a, a balanced budget. First, I'll start with the general fund. The general fund, we are proposing a budget of, a total budget of forty-five million, thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And that will be your first graph that I handed out, graph one. The revenues start with business and occupational tax, the regular, the less than, for construction, less than five million and, and everything else. We are proposing a budget of fourteen million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This will make up about thirty-two point four percent of our general fund budget. When I first started looking at BNO, I was extremely happy. We were exceeding budget. We were exceeding the same time for last fiscal year and we were projecting out a little over fifteen million dollars. Unfortunately, not too long after that, we did find out that we were going to be losing a fairly significant payer that was being absorbed by WVU Medicine. We were going to lose that revenue and that made a significant impact. So we're actually looking at an amount slightly less than where we came at, it came in at for fiscal, fiscal, excuse me, fiscal year twenty-three. Graph two, if you flip to that, that is our BNO taxes. The blue line is regular and then the orange line is the BNO construction. For the BNO construction, we're proposing a budget of one point five million dollars. We are aware of one major project within the city by WVU Medicine that should increase our BNO construction amount from prior year. But if you'll notice in the graph, we're still way off from where we were a few years ago with all the projects around town. And everything from BNO construction is sent over to the Capital Escrow Fund to help Sales tax revenue. Sales tax has sort of flattened out a little bit. Over the last couple of years, we averaged about two point four million dollars per quarter. And there's a table, next page is the table for sales tax. So we are budgeting a, a total sales tax budget of nine point six million dollars. Of that, it is shared equally between Bow Park, Capital Escrow, Retirement Fund and General Fund. So the general fund share is two point four million plus a little bit of prior year carryover. Next graph is your hotel occupancy and wine and liquor tax. We're budgeting or proposing a budget of one point two million dollars for hotel occupancy and eight hundred and forty-five thousand for the wine and liquor tax. This graph, you can see, this was probably two areas that was hardest hit by COVID. We've recovered from that, but we have flattened out a, a little bit on these, on these revenue The Safe Streets and Safe Community Municipal Fee, the MSF, as we call it, has averaged just a little over four million, one hundred and fifty thousand, and we're projecting out for twenty-five at four point two million dollars. All of these monies are earmarked. Two point four million will go to the Capital Escrow for right-of-way improvements and equipment purchases for police and streets. The remaining one point eight million dollars will stay in the general fund to cover police and street salaries. And that would actually be your next graph. Total line is the revenue and then the individual segments of the lines is how the money is divvied up. Property taxes and fire fees, we are proposing a budget of four million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand for property taxes and four million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred for fire fees. If you look at the graph, you can see the, these are relatively flat, they do not change much. The next graph in front of you is just some of the other revenues. Again, you can see there's some slight trends up on some of them, down in some, and a lot of the other ones are remaining flat. I guess my, what I would like council to take away from, from the revenues and the budget is revenues are, are, are good. I don't want to say they're not, but they have flattened out. And I think the, the goal for this year and the goal going forward will be to closely monitor expenses and control expenses so we don't start growing faster than our revenues will allow. Excuse me, my fault. The next page sort of demonstrates what I just said. And that is just where we have been at for the last several years. The next graph will start getting into some of our costs. We created a new form this year and gave to the directors, and if they needed a position, they filled out this form and sent it to us. Originally, we had, I believe, eight or nine new requests. We have trimmed that down to a suggested, thank you so much, approval of three new positions within the city. Two of those new positions, we will be in the general fund. One will be a zoning coordinator within the planning department. And the other new position will be a GIS manager within the city manager department. The one other new position we're suggesting is within the airport, and that is an FBO Fiscal year twenty-five, budget year, will be the first year for some of the positions that were reimbursed from the ARPA grant. Those will be the city ambassadors and the marketing coordinator. The remaining allotment from ARPA for these positions will be used up in the current fiscal year. So next year will be, it will require general revenues to cover these positions. The street coordinator, street outreach coordinator, still will have another year covered by ARPA. For salaries, there is an average of an eight point two percent increase from our class and comp plan. This is a step increase. It's intended to be for longevity and the actual amount depends upon the assigned grade for that position. We're proposing a two percent cost of living or COLA adjustment. That amounts to a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase in salaries, taxes and pension contributions. Inflation has slowed somewhat from what it was the last two years, but for the twelve months ended in December, it's still at a three point one percent, or excuse me, a three point four percent inflation percentage. So our COLA is behind inflation a little bit. There is just now starting, a discussion starting about possibly another market study by Gov HR to make sure that the city's salaries are competitive. Health insurance costs, that was a very difficult amount to try to predict this year with all the changes that have occurred. We did see some really high one-time claims that hit this year. Reviewing those, we think these are one-time and should not have a bearing on possibly future years. But we've also switched third-party administrators from Benefit Assistance Corp. to Health Now. With that, changed the HMO structure from a Cigna structure to a Blue Cross plan. We estimated there would be savings from that. Deductibles and out-of-pocket expenses were tweaked. All that said, there was just a lot of unknown variables in, in the health insurance costs this year. So what I have done is tried to keep it as flat as possible. And then after we get about six months of data, take a real close look at that and, and if we need to make adjustments, I'll come to you with a budget revision to, to make those. It was just really hard to predict. Effective January first, there was a small increase to the premiums that the city charges their employees for medical, dental and vision. And this, this was the first increase in the three years that I've been here. Pension, the non-civil pension contribution is budgeted at twenty-four, twenty-one point four-nine percent of salaries. And this percentage came from the latest actuarial report provided. And this is down a little bit from twenty-one point six-six for this year. The firemen's and policemen's pension includes the required seven percent increase from the alternative method that was elected years ago. And so those amounts funded for police is one million, four ninety-four, one forty-seven, and fire is one million, one ninety-two, five twenty. And just personnel costs in the general fund make up fifty-eight, a little over fifty-eight percent of our, of our total spend out of the general fund. It, it's, it's a little heavy. In the general fund, we are proposing debt service payments totaling five hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars. Those are made up of three different borrowings. The first one is the energy savings bond. That has decreased. We have one more payment on those energy bonds. And that affects not only city, but Bow Park, library, airports, and I believe also parking participated in that energy savings bond. So one more payment in July and those, that will be paid off. Another one is the loan on the 430 Spruce Street. That's a one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one oh-two. And then the North Side Fire Station through the building commission, and those payments are three hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred. The other major category in the, the general fund is transferring and funding of other city funds or city component units or other governments, other government entities. We are proposing to give, to transfer two million, fifty-five thousand to Bow Park, one point eight million for operating and two hundred and fifty-five thousand from the occupancy tax. The Bow Park contribution is up a hundred thousand from last year, mainly to help fund an increase in their seasonal employees, which they've had a hard time keeping, seasonal Met proposing forty-seven thousand, five hundred to the Met. Occupancy tax, forty-five thousand from the occupancy tax and twenty-five hundred from the amusement tax. Fifteen thousand to Hazel Ruby McQuain Park. Arts and Culture Fund, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, three twenty-eight. Airport, two hundred thousand dollars. Library, nine hundred thousand dollars. Mountain Lion Transit Authority, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. MPO, thirty thousand dollars. And then, of course, the Capital Escrow amount total we're proposing is five million, five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That is made up of the MSF revenue, the BNO construction revenue, and also we're suggesting another one point six million dollars from the general fund to Capital Escrow to help fund some of the projects. Contributions, we typically give the Convention and Visitors Bureau half, I shouldn't say give, it's required, six hundred thousand to the Convention and Visitors Bureau from the occupancy tax, and then also about twenty thousand dollars to Region Six. And that leaves us budgeting a contingency for 2025 of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. Onto coal severance. Coal severance, it's a very small fund. We receive quarterly payments from the coal severance. We've been averaging about thirty-five thousand. I'm suggesting a budget of thirty-two thousand per quarter for a total of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. One hundred percent of that goes to Bow Park minus a ten percent contingency that, that we keep in the, the coal severance fund. Capital Escrow, we, we've talked about this a good bit and where the money is coming from. We are suggesting an overall budget of eight million, eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Of that, initially, in, in your books, we suggested three hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred dollars to agency out of the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that, in requests that we received. We'll talk more about agency in, in just a moment. Additional highlights from the Capital Escrow Fund, proposing one million dollars for public safety building renovations, two point one million for right-of-way improvements and equipment for streets, and this is from the MSF, two hundred and eighty-four thousand for police equipment, again from the MSF, two hundred and fifty thousand for potential costs for the new fire station, three hundred thousand for woodburn, woodburn, wood burn repairs and renovations, six hundred thousand for airport runway extension, a hundred and twenty-five thousand for LED lighting at the Met. There is a required hundred and fifty thousand into a sinking fund for Hazel Ruby McQuain Park, two hundred thousand dollars for Bow Park for installation of playground equipment, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for debt service of the 2022A bonds. Twenty-five will be the first year that we are required to make principal and interest payments. Up through 2023, we're, we're just making interest payments. In effective January twenty, twenty-four, we had to start making principal as well. So that's going to take some additional money. Okay, if you flip to the next page, this is the agency requests. The first three columns are as they appeared in your book. I've added a column for recommended adjustments, and this came from meetings that we had last week. So we're, it was suggested that we add a little bit more to Bartlett House to increase theirs to thirty thousand, and then also your community foundation. We added another thirty thousand to make their total seventy thousand dollars. And this, this, I realize, is, is probably going to be moving and changing a little bit more. And then finally, the last page, we were asked to keep a list, compile a list of potential items that we could look at when we do the carryover in July. And this is what we have come up with so far. Again, going to look at Bartlett House, the MRTC, some drainage maintenance, a grant match, bulletin cases, look at Botanic Gardens for possibly more, look hard at the Bow Park capital request, and at a minimum, look at, at one of the pavilions to be repaired and renovated. And then finally, one new item, travel and training for boards and commissions. And one item of note, we may need to add something here as well, potentially for a warming shelter. The next steps and dates relating to the budget, real quick. You will see me again next week on March 5th. That will be the first reading of the general fund and coal severance ordinance. Sometime within the next two to three weeks, we should be getting the final property tax amounts from the county, so we'll have to update those on 3/19. I'll also be here for the second reading of the general fund and coal severance ordinance. And at that time, we'll also And at that time, we'll also present a resolution for the Capital Escrow, Sales Tax, Airport, Met, and Arts and Culture Funds. On March 20th and March 27th, or close there to, we will need to publish a state form regarding the budget in the Dominion Post. On March 21st, we will submit the West Virginia State Auditor's Workbook for the General Fund and Coal Severance to them. April 16th, we will officially lay the levy. And then on April 18th, I will submit the levy order and rate sheet to the State Auditor's Office. And then July will be the carryover calculation, and a couple of months after that, we will start all over again. One item not related to budget, there was a question last week regarding the Financial Stabilization Fund and the amount that was currently in it. As of today, the Financial Stabilization Fund, or any day fund, has $6,606,693 in Is there? Yeah, a lot of sixes. Any questions that me or my team can't answer for you?
First, Kevin, let me say thank you for coming up here and presenting. I know that you have private meetings with myself, Councilor Trumbull, and private meeting Councilor Kawekey, and Mayor Celine, and Dave. But with that said, I just wanted to say thank you for that before I turn it over to your questions.
Appreciate it.
I know it's a lot of work. That's an understatement, but...
I think my meeting is always a lot of work. I come in with 60 highlighted pages and say, okay, let's go one by one. So I appreciate your time. Mine is probably usually one of the longer ones, but it's a good time to get lots of questions answered. The Financial Stabilization Fund, that's pretty restricted on what we can take money out of that for.
Yes, it is. I don't want to say it's exclusive to salaries, but I think, city attorney, anything on that or my staff?
The Financial Stabilization Fund is available for emergencies. Generally, it can be used, money in that fund can be used directly for emergencies or by order of council for any purpose.
Oh, okay. See, I learned something tonight, too. Thank you.
I'm specifically looking at the last page of your presentation that had the items for carryover. I do think we need to add warming and shelter into that. That is something, and I brought that up with the Assistant City Manager earlier today. We don't necessarily have a group who has said, please set aside money for us, but we know it's coming. We might as well have it earmarked and ready to go instead of scrambling in November trying to scrape some money together.
$30,000 is what we had last year, what was requested last year. It looks like it may be a little bit under that, but $30,000?
I would assume she's not done, but I don't know. I think she's, we've heard that they're over budget, but you told me how much they requested, and it's not quite up to budget, but they still go for another two or three weeks.
Okay.
So we'll see what else they turn in. The thing that I wanted to talk about the most was the library. That was something, and I appreciate...
And I will apologize right now, that should be on this list. That was, I was supposed to add that to this list, that last page, and I missed that. That is 100% my bad.
So I spoke with the director earlier this week, and I said, tell me what you got last year, and she said $900. And I said, tell me what you asked for, and she said $990. And I said, what did you ask for additional funds for? And she, she explained that, you know, cost of living increases, there's a couple of staff members that are kind of underpaid now that she would like to bring up to a market rate, and they have a need for some additional furniture. And she also mentioned health insurance. Bow Pa, I have intimate knowledge of generally the Bow Park budget, and hearing from them that Bow Park and the library have not yet been able to get a, an estimate or a cost for what their health insurance is going to cost this year. When do we have that ready for them?
It's going to be flat.
Okay.
That's, it was very, very hard to predict what those costs were going to be because we just simply don't know, there's too many variables. So my budget, I've kept them flat, and I can reach out to both Bow Park and library to say for now that it will not be changing.
Okay, well, I'm sure that'll take a little bit of, like, the weight off of their shoulders. One of the things that the library director mentioned, I said, you know, if it were to stay the same and we were to look with carryover or something like that, would that be sufficient for you? And she said, well, for the furniture that I need, yes, absolutely. But without any kind of indication that they are certainly going to get somewhat of a request, they can't look at their 45 employees and plan for any kind of cost of living adjustment or, oh, I have health insurance slash COLA. I guess if you're saying health insurance, it's going to be the same. But without even a little bit extra, they can't plan for July 1st to give their employees an increase when most city employees would be getting their increase in July. So I think that if we have even a little, and she could definitely, I assume, definitely, I assume, clearly very strategic there, I assume she would be able to give us the number that they would need to add a cost of living adjustment to their employees, and I would like to see that happen. It's hard to plan your budget and things without a little bit of assurance that the money's going to be there. We all know how much the salaries end up costing. As you said, it's 58% of our general fund budget. So if there's even a little bit that we can kind of scrape together and add to the library for now to give them some assurance that they'll be able to give a raise to those employees, and then, you know, we can look at their other requests or their extra little bit after that, I think that that would be very much appreciated by them. They are, they are much more than a library. They're a community center. Their employees deal with a lot.
We'll go back and take a look at that request, and I can reach out to them and...
Squeak it out a little more.
Possibly do half of the additional $90,000 now.
Well, and I'm not sure how mu, like, I don't want to speak. She said that they have 45 or 46 employees right now, so I don't know how much of that 90 was anticipating a health insurance increase or furniture versus wages. So I'm sure she can get us that information.
So is there an agency list of where we stand now?
Yes. And I...
You want me to take a picture and text it to you?
I can...
Yes, I think Joe did that earlier.
I sent her that.
Oh.
I can send you all the files tomorrow.
Oh, that's great.
PDF version, fine.
Sure. Yeah, if we just had a text of the agency requests, so if there's any changes, so we can see. I don't know, has Brian, have you looked through the agency requests?
We'll talk about it more later.
Pardon?
We'll talk about it more later.
I just wanted to see what was on there, so I didn't talk about stuff that's already covered.
I just texted it to you and Weez, so you all know what we're looking at.
All right. Good? So move to the agenda.
Yes.
No, I don't think so.
All right. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, for your efforts.
All right.
Did you send it?
I texted it.
Okay. How was?
We'll make sure you get copies in an email tomorrow.
Weez got it. She responded to me.
All right.
Well, if, the only one I wanted to make sure was in there, since I haven't seen it yet, was that...
There was, the changes that were made were a little additional to Bartlett and a little additional to YCF from our booklet.
From where?
From our booklet. So YCF went from $40,000 to $70,000, and Bartlett went from 20,000 to 30,000.
Great. I'm good.
Good.
I have ideas for the, I have ideas for the carryover, but for today, this is great.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
I moved pursuant to West Virginia State Code, Section 6-9A-4B12. We move into executive session to discuss matters protected by attorney-client privilege.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Sorry, second.
All right.